Good evening, and welcome everyone to the March 24th, 2014 Burnsville Planning Commission Meeting. Welcome Commissioners.
Welcome.
Ms. Garros?
Thank you.
Good to see you here.
Thank you. Appreciate being here.
Good. And welcome everybody in the audience. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, any changes?
No, sir.
Ms. Garros?
No.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
I so move, Mr. Chair. The adoption of the agenda.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Singh.
Second.
A second by Mr. Bradrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That would be pass three zero. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the February 24th, 2014 meeting. Any changes from Commissioners?
No.
Ms. Garros?
No change.
All right. I would entertain a motion on that as well.
I move that we approve.
A move by Mr. Bradrick, second.
Second.
By Mr. Singh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing, application for LMA Partners LLP for a conditional use permit to allow a sports performance training center located at 1121 Riverwood Drive. Ms. Garros?
Thank you, Members of the Commission. We do have a conditional use permit this evening, and this is related to actually an ordinance that I believe came before the Commission at one of your most recent meetings, and that was to actually add Sports Performance Training Center as a use in the I-1 Industrial Park zoning district. The City Council did approve that amendment at their last meeting, so this is kind of part two for this particular applicant, and they're making the application for the actual conditional use permit for the site. And they are looking at the property at 1121 Riverwood Drive, and on the screen is just a general site location map. The properties adjacent are zoned industrial. The R1 that is shown to the west is actually the high school property, so there are no homes that are located in close proximity to the site, and it is located on Riverwood Drive. The site is an existing industrial building, and the applicant is occupying part of that building, a little over 2,000 square, excuse me, little over...
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand, thank you, square feet, and their business is Southside Athletics, and what they are proposing to do is to utilize the space for Sports Performance Training Center. And this is something that is allowed as a conditional use in the zoning district. The property is a little bit over 3.6 acres in size, and the, kind of the nice part about this particular site, it is an industrial site, but there are separated driveways, so the access to the Sports Performance Facility will be from the north off of Riverwood Drive, and then all of the truck traffic associated with the rest of the businesses actually has got different access that is located right here off 12th Avenue, so there won't be any, any co-mingling of traffic from the uses. And in terms of the existing zoning, everything is appropriate. We've had the plans reviewed by the city engineer, by the fire and police departments, and by our building officials. For Southside Athletics, they do anticipate basically utilizing the property. Their hours that are proposed are Monday through Saturday, or excuse me, Monday through Friday from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturdays 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and no Sundays. They are a business that caters to individuals who are interested in things like bodybuilding, and they do not actually have any employees per se, but the athletic coaches are contract employees, so they come in, and there would be a handful of people utilizing the space at any one time, but we do not anticipate at all that this is a large lifetime-type facility. It's oriented towards individuals and individual trainings and sessions. We did notify property owners within 350 feet of the site, and did not receive any public input, so there are no issues. The property does contain plenty of parking spaces, and again, the major thing, having that distinction, that separation between the truck traffic is a very positive thing. The Southside facility, when you take it through the numbers in the ordinance, has a need for 26 parking stalls, likely will not be using all of those at any one time, but that is what the minimum ordinance requirement is. And then there are 47 stalls required of the other uses in the development for a total of 77 parking stalls, and they do have, they meet that, and there are actually a couple of excess parking spaces, so we do not anticipate any issues there. There are no exterior changes proposed to the building, and the site plan, I'll show you, is right here for the floor plan, basically showing you again, it's an existing facility, and they do have, they do have some storage space in addition to the gyms and a small locker area and office. In terms of planning considerations, they are identified in the staff report. The use does meet all of the conditional use permit findings and performance standards that were added to the ordinance. The only item that we have is that the inspections department did review the space, and there is a need to incorporate a, either a drinking fountain or some type of fountain to meet the, to meet the codes with that. Staff is recommending, and this condition is modified a bit from what went out in your packet. This is based on a meeting with our city plumbing official, and the recommended condition of approval is that the applicant needs to install a drinking fountain or water cooler as required by the building official, and then also just to note that that would be a separate permit needed, separate from this conditional use permit. With that, I can stand for questions, and the applicant is here if you would have any questions of them.
Thanks, Ms. Garros. Any questions for Ms. Garros that leap to mind?
Thank you, Chair. Deb, in the original, in our background, they said the original piece that brought this up was some non-conforming signage, and in our background, it did say that, as I drove by, the facility does have limited exterior signage, kind of designed into the building, but you said in here that says the sign plan for the business satisfies the ordinance requirement, so we've struggled lately with signage.
Yes.
Is all of that taken care of, nothing that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, the distinction there is the signage for the building is compliant. Where they ran into some issues and where this was first noticed was related to temporary signs on the property, and they have been, they have been removed, so that is no longer an issue. But the signage that the report is referring to, when Mr. Slaney identified that it's consistent, is based on the building wall signage.
Okay. Because today, the business doesn't have any exterior signage, today.
There is...
There's something in the window.
Yes.
But they're waiting for this to, obviously...
They may, they may install some additional signage, and there's plenty of room for wall signage in addition for that tenant space.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, this facility will be used until 10 at night. Are there adequate lighting for the users as they get out to probably go to their vehicles in the parking?
I will let the applicant address that. I'm not sure of the exact lighting standards.
Just for safety, I want to concern about the safety of the users.
Okay.
Actually, each... We'll call you.
We'll call you.
Yep, you'll just, wait, we'll get to you.
First time.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. And it will not be used on Sundays?
Correct.
Okay. I've, I've read the background information provided, and I think the applicant has worked with staff to correct some of those things that we had discussed earlier when we were talking about changing the ordinance, so I think it looks good to me.
Yes, and, and we have worked closely with the applicant to, you know, to make this workable. When you were looking at the ordinance just in general, although we had this, you know, applicant in mind at the time, the whole Sports Performance Training Facility, that is really a use that's come about in the last five to seven years, and we first started with just allowing them in the I-3 industrial zone, and that was based on a similar situation where we had someone who wanted to come in, and we just didn't allow it anywhere, didn't have it identified as a use. So it was just limited to the I-3 district at that time, but it really makes sense. You know, there's no issues in terms of this, and with the conditional use permit process, that gives the city the ability to review each one individually, and if it's a larger type operation with more parking or those types of things, then the conditional use permit allows for the Planning Commission and Council to look at any of those types of mitigating factors. This particular one that's proposed is a relatively small type of use, and we do not anticipate any issues with parking or other site issues.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, at first, when we were discussing the amendment to the ordinance, I had some reservations because we have industrial, zoned industrial, and we're putting in sports and fitness, but you know, when you have vacant facilities, and even though they're sport or fitness-related, they might not be industrial, but they don't, it's not, they don't create a problem. So, I mean, that's why I supported that change in the ordinance.
And we have found too, I think with that first Sports Performance Facility, that is a reuse of some of the industrial space. It's, they usually are needed for the higher ceilings. Midwest volleyball is not performance, a sports performance facility, but you know, they're an example of, you know, where the space, it's vacant. We do have quite a bit of vacant space that is industrial, and this is a use that is just, seems to be fitting into that district, and they can utilize the space, help in terms of providing an opportunity for another business, and then also help the property owners, you know, to have their space filled and rented.
Not only that, fitness is something that we all should encourage in that.
Exactly.
People from Burnsville and even neighboring cities can use this facility, I think, to improve their physical, I mean, to be great, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garros. Sir, would you step up?
Sure, absolutely.
And start with your name and your address, sir, and then we can get to the...
The business or my personal address?
Your personal address, please.
Sure.
If you'd step up to the lectern?
Oh, oh, sorry, sir.
Yep.
Like I said, I'm a first timer here.
That's fine. If you'd talk right into the microphone?
You bet.
We're a friendly group, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Garth Ekman, 15097 Dupont Path, Apple Valley, Minnesota. Just, everything you said, I agree with. The parking and the parking light is a great question, and if you notice to the picture, not only we do have adequate parking, but to our benefit, because that's the Burnsville parking lot that, you know, covers around us, there's actually a lot of that light also in that, from that parking lot that we also get exposed to. So, in my estimation, and I'm not a professional, it seems plenty adequate, and we've never had any of the people who leave in the evening when it's dark ever feel unsafe or question that, but I'll probably notice it tonight when I'm out there and it's dark, so, but I think it's, I think it's good. And the way that we have it set up, and the way, I don't know if it was by design by Maggie, all of the lights out front have a sensor, so when you walk by, each door has a light over the top, so that goes on as well, so that's very helpful.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. You just, just hold on for one second, please?
Sure, sure, sure.
Any other question?
In a lot of these facilities, there are some exterior training that goes on, or...
Right.
Flipping big tires, or can that be done in the back lot safely, or does, is, I don't completely understand your piece of the pie of the training business, but...
Right, right.
Is that doable where you're at, or...
What, what we do is like, one of the groups that we train is the Minnesota Swarm, the professional lacrosse team. In the summer, if we go out to the back and do something like that, typically, it's on a Saturday, and there's no real traffic in the back, but that is where we do that. There was one time earlier this summer where we wanted to use the lawn out front for one particular day. We have gentlemen who were training a group for what are called the Highland Games. They're the ones who wear the kilts and throw the stones, so we called Linville and got permission that one day to be out in the grass. Other than that, almost 95, 99% of the training is done indoors.
Okay.
So, and the, the beauty of this space is because it's Minnesota, and as of today, we're having our fifth winter, is that it's almost primarily all turf inside in that one large space, so that, that's why it's so valuable to me personally, because come wintertime, you have eight months that you can't be outside flipping tires, so we do all that indoors, things like that.
Thank you.
So. Anything else?
That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. I would think entertain a motion at public hearing. Oh, it is a public hearing. You are correct. It is a public hearing, my apologies. I would at this time open the public hearing. Anybody that has a comment or a question related to this would like to step forward. This is the time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, as I said earlier, this, the applicant and the staff, they have both done a great job, went through the background information, looks good, and I plan to support the application.
Thank you.
Chair, I would be supporting it also. I think, number one, I think this is a great use for some of the empty space we have in the I-1 with the lower ceilings, I agree, and I appreciate how the applicant and the staff have worked together. This could have been kind of a tough situation, and I think the city addressed it and made a change and kind of opened the path going forward. So with that, I would make a motion.
I will, I will be supporting it as well, so I would entertain that motion.
Okay. And Deb, I think I have this right. I move that the Planning Commission recommends the City Council approval of the conditional use permit to allow a sports training center within the existing building at 1121 Riverwood Drive with the following condition. The applicant shall install a drinking fountain per se into the plumbing code, and this will require a separate permit as needed.
I think we would need to add "or" water cooler.
Or water cooler.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry. You know, it was on the screen and it wasn't here.
[laughing]
Boy, you know, you give people, you send them, send them to school and you buy them books, and so, would you like me to start over, or the condition is the applicant should install a drinking fountain or water cooler as required by the building official. A separate permit for the work will be needed. I stand corrected.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bradrick, second.
Mr. Chair, I'm honored to second a motion so ably presented by my colleague.
All right, seconded by Commissioner Singh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes three zero.
When it goes to the...
And it goes to the City Council on April 8th, 2014?
Yes.
All right.
It should be under a consent agenda item, and we'll send you the, a copy of the report before it goes.
Thank you very much, Deb.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Wish your success.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, application for the City of Burnsville for minor housekeeping amendments to City Code Title 10, zoning chapters four through eight, 12, 12B through 24, 26, 26A, 26B, 28 through 30A, to update regulations to be consistent with current policies, correct language, add or correct code citations and cross-references, correct punctuation, and add language to clarify standards and requirements. Ms. Garros?
Thank you, Commissioners. Just to, to note for everyone, we do have the entire, everything, all the red lines here that we can go through. I thought what I would like to do is to just generally give you an idea of what the general updates are, and then if there are specific questions, we can certainly open up and, and go to those specific questions. There's a lot of material here, but there are very similar changes taking place to multiple chapters within the zoning ordinance, so that's kind of, kind of how we tried to put this together. As far as housekeeping amendments, the city does this periodically. The last time that we actually went through and did these was about three, four years ago, March 2010. And what we do is, as a staff, we basically keep kind of a running list of various things that need to be addressed, but it's not something that we would call a public hearing, just, you know, for a definition or something of that sort. There's cost and publication and those types of things that go along with it, along with our Commissioner and councilmembers' time, so we kind of put these together. The amendments that are proposed are, for the most part, very minor types of changes. There are a couple of new things, and the Planning Commission has been involved with those reviews, and I'll touch on that in a moment. We did go through in the staff report and broke down and identified the major changes per each chapter in the zoning ordinance, so you do have that. Generally speaking, one of the changes that you will see happening in a lot of the various districts and chapters of the zoning ordinance relates to screening standards and garbage and recycling containers, and the reason that we are bringing this to you is that the city this year started doing very proactive property maintenance enforcement throughout the city. It used to be done just on a complaint basis. We now have staff that goes out and they have identified areas of the city that they basically look and see what issues that we have. As you might imagine, with some of these, there have been some issues that have involved the city attorney and actually some litigation. The way that code enforcement works generally is usually the property owners are notified and given time to bring their property up to whatever the code standard is, and then if not, there's a second notification generally, and then if need be, the issue turns into court action, where they actually go before a judge, and, and the judge makes a decision. We have had a couple of cases this year where the judges have made decisions that are unique with respect to how the city has conducted business over the past, it's our 50-year anniversary this year, so, anyway, some of these changes are recommended to you as a result of those court cases and recommendations by the city attorney, so that we can alleviate any questions or ambiguity in the ordinance that was pointed out by the court. The ones related to screening garbage and recycling containers, we had a situation where the court did not believe that our use of opaque screening was understandable or clear, and they wanted to, they wanted us to have a better way of describing, you know, what needs to be screened and to what extent. In looking at that, from a staff perspective, we thought opaque was fairly clear. The general definition is pretty clear when you look it up in, in a dictionary, but to, to deal with the issue, we totally removed the word from the ordinance, and we're looking at basically defining screening as, as something that can be a combination of things. It can be a wall, it can be a planting screen, it can be fencing, it can be changes in topography, the types of things, a berm, for example, but basically that obstructs view of whatever is supposed to be screened 100%, and that is generally, the majority of our ordinance has always had 100% screening. We've just described it in terms of opaque as opposed to obstructed view. A second part of that relates to, we do have a standard currently that allows planted screens to be installed at an 80% opacity, and what that was trying to get at is that when you plant plants, generally, from our foresters' recommendation, generally better to plant smaller plants. They tend to take whether, take better and grow better and actually more quickly than if you put in larger species. So that 80% opacity was meant to allow them, to allow the applicant to install a smaller tree, per se, that would grow and within a year or two reach that 100% opacity or obstruction. What we've done in this case is, because it's so difficult to describe, and because the judge in the case had such difficulty with, with this, we are recommending that that 80% standard be removed, and this is consistent. Actually, there is another part of the ordinance, the landscape regulations or landscaping chapter, and in that, a couple of years ago, we made a bunch of changes to that, and we put in a requirement that if something needed to be screened, that it needed to be 100% screened at the time of installation. So even though this 80% opacity is still in the ordinance, it really probably should have been removed when we did the landscape ordinance update a few years ago. So that is, that is getting at, at those changes, and you will see those changes throughout many of the chapters in the zoning ordinance related to that. The other item that came up is with regard to public versus private containers, and the case was made something to the effect of, well, if you've got, you know, a city park or a city street, or, you know, a gas station that has a container for garbage, that doesn't have to be screened. It's like, hmm, that's true. It doesn't. The screening requirements apply to private property and screening, and so what we did to alleviate that or to provide more clarity is we actually added provisions that indicate if there is a container that is meant for use by the general public, whether it's something the city puts out, or the gas station, or a bank, or whatever, if it's intended for public use, then it does not have to be screened. And we did also exclude from that, though, things like dumpsters and some of these larger facilities that are, are required to be screened. So in general, those are the changes, and again, they're pretty much related to some case, cases that we've had that have gone to court. The second major changes, in staff's opinion, is related to defining things like lounge, nightclub, tavern, and those types of uses. Right now, in the ordinance, there are some districts that have a paragraph that say all of these types of uses are allowed by conditional use permit. The problem is, is that we have not had separate definitions of what those things actually are, and so we went through, again, with the assistance of the city attorney, and actually came up with definitions for nightclub and tavern and lounge, lounge being a new use, and what that reflects are uses where people would come together and use it for some type of a social gathering type space, but perhaps not have liquor associated with it, or dance floor, those types of things. When you get into some of those different nuances, that's where the definitions of lounge, nightclub, and tavern are identified, and we also listed them then separately in each of the zoning districts where they would be allowed as separate and distinct uses. Again, this is all getting back to, you know, what, we have had, in this case, not so much issues with enforcement, but we have had applications or uses that have wanted to come in to the city, and again, similar to the Sports Performance Facility, we didn't really have anything that really identified or defined what they are. So the city attorney recommended that we actually define a lounge-type use, and then add that to the various districts where it would be permitted or conditional. The next item, cigar bar. Cigar bar, a lot of times was associated with things like nightclubs and taverns and whatnot. Cigar bars actually, though, are recommended by the city attorney to be removed because... Cigar bars actually, though, are recommended by the city attorney to be removed because of a conflict with the Indoor Clean Air Act. So we have actually deleted that cigar bar use from the ordinance. There is an existing facility in the heart of the city that is a cigar bar, and with this change, they can continue to operate. They're considered to be legal nonconforming uses because they would be in existence before the ordinance came into effect. But new cigar bars would not be allowed throughout the city. The next major element relates to farmers' markets. And in this case, what we did is really just changed and expanded the locations where farmers' markets could be located throughout the city. Reason for this is farmers' markets are gaining in popularity. They're something that, you know, that schools are looking at and the public in general. We have a couple of them that operate now in Burnsville. And the current ordinance requires that they obtain an interim use permit in order to operate. What staff is recommending is that we remove that interim use permit requirement because there are also a number of standards, performance standards, that go with a farmer's market. And we feel that as long as they can meet the performance standards, there shouldn't be a need for a specific interim use permit. It just adds cost and time and more paperwork to a use that, in general, people feel is something that should be allowed in communities and is very popular and getting more popular as we continue. The temporary seasonal outdoor sales, very much like farmers' markets. It was only allowed in business districts. And so what we have, what we are recommending is to allow them in more zoning districts. And again, there are a lot of performance standards that go along with that. But if you have a site that has a large enough parking lot, for example, where you can meet your parking standard but can also do Christmas tree sales or something of that sort, then from our perspective, we feel that we should allow that. So we've expanded it from just the business districts to also some of the areas where churches are allowed, schools are allowed, those types of things. The next item, and this is something that the planning commission was involved with review of last year in 2013 and was part of the work plan for the planning commission. And it relates to, I believe it started out with the I-3 zoning district, and trying to define the various types of uses. The ordinance has all sorts of different ways of describing, you know, basically what's an office and what's a medical-type use, and taking all of those various terms, if you will, that generally did not have any definitions, and streamlining those, and then adding them to the appropriate zoning districts where they would be allowed. And what we did is, working with the city attorney again, looked at trying to come up with definitions that were broad enough, that would not create nonconformities in some of the districts, especially like the I-3 district. And we believe that we have accomplished that. For the most part, what we've done is really come up with medical service-type uses, and those include everything from clinics to chiropractors and all sorts of different things in just a general medical services use, and then also a general office use. And we've separated office from things like office warehouse, contractor's office, you know, those types of things. So it's just office, to make that more clear. And also with that, the planning commission did review this as part of your work plan last year. It also did go to the Economic Development Commission, and we've incorporated the recommendations from there and worked with the city attorney to come up with the definitions that are proposed. For conditional use permits, really all we did is add an item in there that we commonly do as planning commission and council. For conditional use permits, you're looking at a use to determine if it's going to have any negative impacts on adjacent properties and then looking to try to mitigate those impacts. And a lot of times, we'll apply restrictions on hours of operation or days of operation. Usually, if, for instance, if something is next to a residential neighborhood, then there might be, they may not be able to have lighting, you know, past 10:00 or midnight or whatever. Some of those types of things, we commonly do that. So we just added it as one of the standing provisions, if you will, and it just allows the city, if they feel it's appropriate for the particular use, to include some limitations on hours and days of operation. For the appeals, we have got, there's a section in the zoning ordinance and also state statute that allows property owners to appeal decisions of staff and bring them through a process for review to planning commission and council. What we didn't have is, that was never included on our application forms, and also there is no fee associated with that. So all we did is add it as another type of application, follows the same fee schedule as all of the other types of applications that involve planning commission review and council review. So that would be in addition, something that just has been an oversight, and we just had suggested that that occur at this point. Similar thing is official maps. And what an official map is, official maps are done by the city to put property owners on notice that there is a planned road or thoroughfare that's needed, so that when somebody comes in to develop property, they know that something, you know, that there is some restriction on the property and that there will be a future road through there. These provisions are already located in another section of the city code, but they do require that the planning commission review these. And since the planning commission is in charge of all of the zoning requirements, we just thought rather than just having it in this obscure place, you know, someplace else in the city code, that we just add it to the zoning ordinance, which contains all of the other duties that planning commission is involved in reviewing. So that is just a citation noting that it is elsewhere and just putting people, giving it what it needs. And hopefully, when the next official map comes through, nobody will forget that it needs to come to the planning commission. So that's really why that's proposed. The next one is related to waste material, and this is a little bit different situation. The zoning ordinance has been set up, generally we do not allow in Burnsville, a lot of these containers, like, we call them like a big green container, or sometimes there'll be containers where people can bring in clothes, you know, for recycling, and there's usually a private entity, maybe nonprofit, that sets these things out in communities. And the city has never allowed them. What we wanted to do is to identify those as outdoor storage, so that they are, it would be subject to screening requirements. It's something that we have had a lot of inquiries about, but not a way to really address them that specified in the ordinance. So that's why we're suggesting that we actually, just say in the ordinance, that these types of facilities are considered to be outdoor storage and then subject to, just like any other requirements for outdoor storage in terms of screening and those types of things. The next one, related to weeds. As you might believe, this is related to another court decision. And what this does is really just take some definitions that are found elsewhere in the city code, makes them also part of the zoning ordinance, so that the inspectors have grounds to stand on when doing enforcement. And really, it's just defining not just weeds and also the height of grasses and weeds, so that the inspectors can require it to be cut if needed. The next one is a new provision, and this is related to a recommendation from the city engineer's office. And this relates to when you have a situation where you've got sloped driveway or a situation where the street grade is already established, the street's in, and then you have the property that's at either, you know, above the street or below the street. There's nothing in the ordinance now that really provides for the city attorney to be able to work with property owners for maximum slope and how that access actually happens. And this is driveway accesses, both in terms of commercial industrial properties, residential properties. So what the city engineer has suggested, and this is also coming through some plans that Chris Slenia has reviewed within the past year or two, that it would be very helpful if there was a provision, giving the city engineer some flexibility in working with property owners under these conditions, that if you have a slope or grade for the access, the driveway access, that is between 10% and 15%, that that would allow the city engineer to work with the applicant on how to actually provide that access. Sometimes it might include that they have to slope the driveway in a certain way to deal with runoff, might be some other conditions, but that's just something that has come up several times in the past couple of years, and this is why this is suggested. And primarily, it's to deal with those topographic considerations when you have the existing street and property at different elevations and need to somehow, in a short space, provide The next one, related to tree contractors licenses. This is an item where the city code was amended last year, and tree contractors now need to be licensed in the city. So we thought, very similar to some of the other ones, it might be a good idea to include this in our section of the zoning ordinance that talks about woodlands and trees. So we're just adding basically a citation that, to put people on notice that they need to contact the city forester for these license requirements that actually have been required for the past year. This one, I have to apologize, I was a little happy here with cutting and pasting, so we really only have two left. These are the ones we already talked about at the bottom. One of them is to remove annual permitting requirements for a couple of things. We currently require a permit if a business wants to do outdoor seating. That's usually related to restaurant-type uses, excuses, excuse me. And we really have had very few of these over the last nine years that Chris and I have been here. And it's such a small amount of what is done that, from our opinion, really does not need to have a separate permit requirement, but very similar to some of the other things. As long as you can meet the standards, then you can have, you know, you can do outdoor seating at your place of business. Very similar to what is allowed already for Heart of the City zoning district, just kind of expanding it to the other business districts. The other thing is that we do have a requirement, when we initiated language for farmers' markets a couple of years ago, and also community gardens, there is a requirement for an annual sign permit for these. And what we found is, these uses, generally, there is one organization that proposes the use, and they just continue operating it year after year. St. Paul Farmers Market is one, Mary Mother of the Church is another. And why have them come in for separate permits each year for the same use that they do? So again, we are just recommending that there's not a need to have specific signed permits for those or annual permits. So we're suggesting that those requirements be removed from the ordinance. And then lastly, Mr. Slenia put together some criteria for, related to illumination standards for dynamic display signs and billboards. And these are just really some updates to address the new technology that we've been seeing for the past couple of years. So that language is proposed for the ordinance as well. And with that, that pretty much concludes the presentation part, but I am willing to go through page by page if you want to. I certainly can do that. Also, just wanted to note for the commission, this is a public hearing for this zoning part. We have also included with your packet other city code amendments that will be going to the city council along with this particular application. And the city council does not have to hold public hearings, for the most part, to adopt changes to most elements of the city code. The zoning ordinance is different. That, by state law, requires planning commission public hearing and input. We did want to include them because they are related to the zoning changes. It's just that they're other parts of the city code, and you do not specifically have to look at them. But we certainly can address any questions or forward any comments that you would have if you want to on those as well.
Thank you, Ms. Gueros.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions this time? You can go first.
You go ahead.
Okay. I have a few.
Go ahead.
Okay. Deb, no particular order. I wanted to just clarify on the cigar bar change. I'd like to, just quickly, for the public to know, so they will be nonconforming, the one that we, the business that we have today.
Grandfathered.
Yes, will be. Yes, will be a legal, nonconforming. Be a legal, nonconforming. And there are some rules and stipulations based around them, them making a change to their business. I think they can expand, but under 50%. Could you, you have all that in your head?
Certainly.
I just saw everybody understands.
Certainly. For nonconforming uses, if, there are a couple of different things. There are uses that become nonconforming because an ordinance has changed. You know, it's nothing that the business has done. They continue to operate. Those would be considered to be legal, nonconforming uses. Another kind of general term that people use are grandfathered uses, whereas they can continue. Actually, the state modified nonconforming language, so pretty much as long as, even if their business is destroyed by fire or wind damage, tornado, that type of thing, as long as you make application within, I believe it's six months of the destruction, you can rebuild the same use. The city cannot preclude you from doing that. So basically, what, in this case, for the cigar bars, no new ones would be allowed to come in. The existing one can continue to operate. It's legal, nonconforming, so it's, that means that it was permitted at the time that it went in, and they can continue to operate. And like I said, even if that building were destroyed for some reason, as long as they came in for a building permit within six months, they could even actually rebuild and start over.
And if they want to expand, I think it's up to 50%.
Yeah, there are some provisions.
About what if they can.
Correct.
They just come in and follow the normal procedures and we proceed through.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll keep going.
Go ahead.
I may have some of yours.
Go ahead.
Okay. On the trash screening, I just, I got a couple of questions, and I want to make sure that the public understands our process. So prior, there was the ability to do some planting, and I read in our background where there could be summer/winter plant, you know, and it was evergreens that would continually screen something, not just in the summer.
Correct.
Can we just quick, the process would be today, it's not just if someone drives by and sees a trash can in front of someone's house. There's a several-step process, and then the city would ask them if the trash cans are going to be left outside, that they get, that they're screened. Because just for the public's notice, they leave their trash cans out overnight on the day that the pickup is. Can we make sure that everybody kind of understands what we're doing there?
Certainly. You're correct. There are provisions that, obviously, when it's your trash pickup day the next day, property owners can put their trash out for pickup. And that's allowed elsewhere in the ordinance. I think that the other item that you're looking at are, when you have, let's see, how can I best do this? When you have items, I'm trying to think. Just lost my train of thought, sorry.
Well, one of the questions, I'll ask then.
Thank you.
One of the questions, not necessarily just trash cans, let's say if there's, someone has ladders stored outside or other things besides, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, there is a definition for, when we say things need to be screened in general, how do you determine where or how much that needs to be screened? There is a definition that's part of the zoning ordinance. It was not included in your information tonight, but it is in the ordinance, that basically defines it as tonight, but it is in the ordinance, that basically defines it as a point. So if you are looking at screening rooftop equipment, for example, we have situations where you might have a road, like County Road 42, that is higher than buildings, and the requirement is to screen rooftop equipment. Well, there is no way that you're going to be able to screen rooftop equipment if you are traveling on a road above the building. What the ordinance has is a definition that identifies that where you take, or where you look for that screening is a certain point. It's usually located across the street and at a height or elevation of, of like six feet. So if someone was looking at it, they were six feet tall, then we get with the applications, profiles, and I think the commissioners, that you have seen these before, where the applicant shows that, yes, from this point at a height of six feet, when you look up at the building, you will not be able to see, see that material. So we do have, it's not, as you said, a question of just generally when you drive by, can you see it or not. It's based on that location defined by the zoning ordinance. At that particular location, it needs to be screened 100%. And that's how the inspectors review those, those types of circumstances.
Okay. The farmers market, there's a change in the background, it talked about schools, universities, churches. There were several that were kind of, it's allowed. So obviously, those operate in, in districts where it's going to be allowed. And if a church wants to have a farmers' market, what do they have to do to be able to put one in?
Certainly. For those uses elsewhere in the ordinance, it's under Title III, which deals with licensing. The city council, a couple of years ago, well, actually even more, so, in order to account for or provide for what they call legacy events, and those are certain types of community, larger community events, they're set up for the general public, that certain organizations that provide those, like schools, like churches, the city in its, I can't think tonight, Firebuster would be an example.
International Day.
International Day. Those types of uses are exempted from having to get permits or having to pay permit fees. So in those cases, where those uses are allowed, if a church wants to do a farmers' market, for example, they would be able to do that. They wouldn't have to get a permit or, or pay, you know, a couple hundred dollar fee for that. Whereas, an instance that isn't considered a legacy event or, or defined as such, they would need the actual permit, and the fee would apply to them. It's kind of to encourage, to encourage our local organizations, and, you know, things that are family or, or business oriented toward, you know, our own population and what's good for the community.
Just a couple more?
Sure.
Okay. The wording we made specifically in the industrial districts, or I-3, around medical services, I just wanted to clarify real quick. Given the wording that we have today, we are not, in your opinion or your knowledge, we are not creating any new legal non-conforming businesses in, let's say, I-3.
Correct. I believe that, that the definitions have been drafted to be broad enough so that all of the uses, again, are covered. For example, even though we defined medical service, et cetera, defined office, those uses are still allowed in the same district. It's just that now they're listed separately, and there's a definition that goes along with them. But we've worked with the, the city attorney's office to draft those. We don't want to create a bunch of non-conforming situations, ever. So we've really tried to work with that, and I don't believe that there are any that would be negatively affected.
Planning Commission, they spend quite a bit of time also discussing that.
Yes. Yes. Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes. So we did take the recommendations from both commissions, and then worked with the city attorney, in trying to come up with some language that was workable, and again, did not create non-conforming situations out there.
I know we've had people come in front of the city council to ask for permission to put the donation boxes in. And we've never allowed them, but doing the screening wording is going to kind of further put some teeth behind that from the city, from a zoning standpoint, to not allow those, because realistically, a donation box that you can't see because of a fence isn't going to be feasible.
And that's exactly the point. We do allow them, but they need to be located inside buildings. It's just the outside. So, yes, we just wanted to clarify for exactly that point, that they are considered outdoor storage, so they will have to be screened. So, yeah, technically, you can have one. Most likely, we'll need a conditional use permit to do that, but it's going to need to be screened. So that...
Get us away from people dumping and it not being maintained.
Exactly. And having, you know, having a lot of material outside because it doesn't fit in it, and those types of issues. Correct.
In removing the outdoor seating requirement, I know we had, in front of this body, there was several issues in the past where there was discussion. I remember specifically Burger Jones, and outdoor seating, and noise, and, and music, and how long it could play, and with the neighbors. And I think there was some same, when, I think, the Hooters Restaurant at the time asked for. So can you walk me through with this change, how that would go? Do we, do we have ordinances that are, or does that just be part of a CUP, the outdoor seating, or can you educate me on that change?
There is a difference. What we are talking about are the incidental accessory outdoor seating, and those provisions are for very small, you know, maybe five to 10-seat types of things, not the large ones like Burger Jones, et cetera. Those would still be required to go through the conditional use permit process, similar to the Hooters situation. Yes. This is more like something, if you had, like at a Jimmy John's, a couple of, a couple of chairs and a table to sit outside. That's what we are referring to. Yes.
Thank you very much for that clarification. And last question. Where you said Chris had made some, put together some language based around signs and the, is it candles per square meter?
Yes.
Is that?
Candellas.
Candellas.
Knits.
I've learned something this evening. I, I'm sorry, I learn something every meeting. The candellas per square meter, does that address something that's on our work plan in reference to LED lighting?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I believe that does.
That's the...
I can clarify that and bring that back, let the commissioners know if there's something else. But I believe that this is intended to address that.
To address. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Chair?
That's the end of my questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, my colleague here has raised some of the questions that I had noted. I just have some comments, and...
Sure.
First of all, I would like to commend staff for the wonderful job you've done in updating these ordinances. Takes a lot of time. It takes putting materials together from court cases to legislation at the state level, federal level, to our day-to-day operations. When you find something that does not meet the needs of the citizen, I think we look at it and we make changes. So it takes a lot of hard work, and I would like to commend staff, Deb, you, and Chris, and any other person involved. So, great job. You know, citizens look at what we do sometimes, and especially in a situation like this, and they say, we have too many rules. Well, you have to realize that rules are there for the benefit of our people, our citizens. And when, when the ordinances and the rules are delineated in such a way that people can understand them, it makes it more user-friendly. And people have the, the guidelines within which to work. And I know staff is always willing to meet with people and to answer their questions whenever they have such. You know, the beginning, you said that there were minor housekeeping changes, but some of these have important impact on what we do in planning. And even though the Planning Commission deals with zoning, you were kind enough to send to us information on other areas of the city's operations that the city council will be dealing with, in addition to what, those that are related to zoning. So I just want to let the viewing and listening audience know that what we're doing here is, hopefully, will help them understand what they need to do when they have projects, or they have questions that they need to ask. Great job on, Mr. Chair. I commend the staff on behalf of the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. I don't have anything else, unless you have anything else?
I would, I concur. I, I think you guys did a great job, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. You make our job a little easier. And I do, it's, I appreciate that, you know, we fix these little things, and so there's no surprises to our residents when they're applying for something, and we're out in front of it and, and being as specific as we can. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I should have said, my favorite part of all of this changes is farmers' market. It's great that we have relaxed some of the rules, and the fees, the fees that go with farmers' market. It's very popular. People are able to get fresh fruits and vegetables and several days in a week, you know, some Wednesdays, Saturdays. I think it's great, and I, I patronize the markets. I go to the markets, so I really like that. So, thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
We got to open a public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Now, twice? Something wrong.
This is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments on the proposed changes, now is the time to step forward and do so. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And at this point, I think you can make a motion.
I'll start over. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission recommend the city council approval of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments as presented.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Brederich.
It's my honor to second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 3-0, and this will go also to the council on April 8th.
Yes.
Correct? 2014?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Nice rendition.
Thank you very much.
In a very succinct way. Appreciate that. Let's see, the next item on the agenda is any updates. Commissioners, any updates at this time?
None from me, Chair.
All right.
None from me, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Gueros, any updates?
No, not, not anything, other than we've talked about tonight.
I think our next meeting is April 14th, so it's actually like three weeks out instead of two, because of an extra Monday or something to that effect. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move as Chair.
A move by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brederich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 3-0, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.